That's the Reno County Economic Development Strategic Plan Report. Deborah, I see you're ready to go.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Bogner. I'm Deborah Tuftel with the Hutchinson Reno County Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here today representing our Greater Hutch Economic Development Partnership with Reno County and partners across the county. As you recall, earlier this year, we spoke about the need to align and work together on a new economic development strategic plan, taking us into the next five years of work that we are embarking on, and you have been a partner in that work. We had selected an advisory group that helped us go to work developing a request for a proposal from a firm that could work with us in the strategic planning effort, convene focus groups, look at the research that impacts Reno County, and set us on this path forward. So that advisory group, many of the members of the group are here today. We also were able to receive funding from several of the partners. So Startup Hutch, Greater Hutch, the Hutchinson Community Foundation, South Hutchinson, the City of Hutchinson, as well as yourselves, helped invest in this plan. And we selected two partner firms. The first phase of this has been conducted by Amy Holloway with AHA Advisors, and she's here today to present to you the entire plan. Also working in partnership with us is Doug Kinsinger with Opportunity Funding, and he is here as well. So I thank you for your investment in this work. I'm going to turn things over to Amy, and then we'll stand for questions.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. How are you? It's good to be back here in Reno County. Like Deborah said, I'm going to be presenting you with the highlights from this economic development strategic plan. There's a lot in the document. I can see you've got a copy of that in front of you. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the report after I go through this presentation. But again, thank you for having me this morning. As Deborah said, we had some wonderful funding partners and an advisory group that we assembled and met with on a regular basis since we started the process in May. You'll see their names listed there, and a number of them are in the room. Thank you, guys, for serving on the advisory group. I think we had nine meetings plus a workshop in August with this team. So they really had a lot to do with how the strategy shaped up and the recommendations in the strategy. So thanks for all the funders and the advisory group members. The planning process began in May, and today kind of represents the conclusion of the planning process. We had really robust stakeholder input along the way. We had a community survey with almost 350 participants. I led 21-to-1 interviews. I led 10 focus groups with eight to 12 people. In each focus group, you can see the rest of it. So we had, I would say, close to about 400 people involved with the process from beginning to end. A whole lot of notes. I have a stack of notes in my office about this thick that I went through and made sure that those voices were represented in the strategy, and especially in terms of what our goals and priorities are for the plan. Like Deborah said, this began with some good research. So in addition to the stakeholder input, we also conducted a benchmarking analysis, a detailed data analysis of how Reno County stacks up against 10 other kind of comparison counties, as well as the US and the state. And that gave us a really clear indication of how well we're doing and what areas we might need to see improvement in. So this is a really high-level summary of those research themes. I don't know if you've seen the actual benchmarking analysis document, but that will be an appendix to this report. Tons of data for those who like data to dig into and think about. But I would say there were four big research themes that came out of this. The first is that there's definitely an opportunity to improve our economic conditions and focus on creating even more higher-wage jobs and quality investment. We're seeing that the county's been losing population, has been losing jobs compared to other communities. Maybe the growth hasn't been where we want it to be, but we're seeing positive signs. We're seeing that salaries and wages in this community are increasing at a faster pace than other places, so we're on the right track. And so we just say throughout this document that we need to keep our eye on the prize of higher-wage jobs and quality investment. Another research theme that we found is that, this is, you know, no big surprise to folks in this room, but building our talent pipeline and continuing with that process is really important. We're seeing a loss in population of young professionals, this 25- to 44-year-old individuals who usually fuel a pipeline of talent for companies. So, you know, you start thinking about what we need to do to make sure that we're a community that's really family-friendly and has that quality of life that those individuals are looking for, along with those job opportunities. Housing was a topic that came up quite a bit from our stakeholders, and we looked at the data around housing. Yes, there's a housing issue here. It's not as expensive as we might see in other places, but because construction has been slow and incomes are a little bit lower, it's creating a concern around housing availability. So I would say, you'll see this also in the strategy, we need to continue good efforts to create good quality housing at multiple levels here in the community. But this is, the last research theme is something that's just, you know, it's been on my mind as I've been working in kind of a third-party perspective on this community. There's a lot of good energy, and there are a lot of good programs already underway. Some of them are a little fledgling. They're things that we've invested in in the last year or two, so we're still waiting for them to, you know, start the wheels in motion in some ways. But there's a lot of good energy, there's a lot of great leadership, and I'm starting to see that alignment taking place that everyone's looking for. So keep up the good work, and you'll see that reinforced throughout the strategy. Getting into our work, so whenever I create a county-wide economic development strategy, especially one that's looking for alignment of various partners in that economic development ecosystem, I start with who our audiences are for economic development. So we can't be everything to everybody. We can't go out and attract every single industry we want to this community. We just don't have the resources, nor is that a smart way of doing economic development. So we start by honing in on a handful of industries that have great promise here. They may already be established here and need assistance with innovating and expanding here, or they might be industries that have promise for the future based on the assets that we have here and based on what we want to see coming up in our economy. So you'll see a list here of the target industry clusters that we're recommending. There's really four main clusters: advanced manufacturing, technology and professional services, mining utilities, and value-added agriculture, the stuff we can do with the land and the assets that we have here, and then aviation and transportation. And you'll see within each one of those a list of really specific niche sectors within each cluster, as well as a few recommendations we're making in terms of who we target our entrepreneurial efforts on and our business retention and expansion efforts. So those are kind of like all of the above, plus we want to make sure that we're really taking care of our destination retail businesses and also healthcare-related businesses. And I'm going to pause here and just focus quickly. You'll see this in the recommendations as well. But we're also recommending a cluster-building approach instead of just a one-off kind of target approach. And let me explain what that means. Communities that embrace this kind of cluster approach mean that they're thinking about these industries not just as attraction targets. We're going to go out and attract the biggest company we can in this field, and then we're going to be done with it. No, instead, they're considering the needs of these industries when they're investing in workforce development programs or education programs or infrastructure or public policies. You can see that little graphic on the right. When you're focused on these industry clusters and becoming a great place, a good competitive place for these clusters, you're thinking about the whole kind of ecosystem around them. And when I'm thinking about how you create an approach to county-wide economic development that really aligns partners, this is one part of it, that we're all focused on this same set of audiences. We're trying to make this, in whatever ways we can within our own organizations, a great place for those industries. So that's one of my recommendations just off the bat, is let's hone in on these target clusters, making sure that we're a really great place for these. And you see success in this type of approach in communities all over the country. In fact, the ones that have done this well, their whole brand identity starts to be kind of formed around these industries. So that, me living in North Carolina, when I think of, you know, Kansas or Kansas City, I might think of, you know, animal health. You know, that comes top of mind because they've invested in that cluster for so long. And that type of thing can happen here as well. So, just framing up the strategy, let's get into some of the recommendations. Another way to align our efforts is by sharing a vision for economic development. What is our economy going to look like 10, 20 years from now? How are we going to establish that, and then what are our shared goals? So I would say, everyone, I would hope, everyone. I don't know if this is ever going to happen, but, you know, you can consider this your one-page strategy. Everyone could have a little postcard in their back pocket. And when they're making decisions about what to invest in, they're thinking, does this investment or does this program, this initiative reinforce these things? Is this thing that we're doing going to get us closer towards this vision of being a vibrant, resilient county where everyone thrives? Is this thing that we're doing, the way that we're approaching it, working together with others, that center part of the star? Is this thing that we're doing showing that we're confidently investing in our community and that we're elevating and celebrating our strengths? Also here, you'll see the five goals of the strategy. And you can read these for yourselves, but I'll go through them kind of quickly here. But the first goal being creating high-wage jobs and quality investment, whether that's through attracting new investment into our community or helping the companies and entrepreneurs that we have here do really well. The second goal is around making sure that we've got a really strong talent pipeline. You know, we can't have a conversation about economic development without having a conversation about workforce development. It's kind of inseparable nowadays. So that's our second goal. The third goal is to have a flourishing entrepreneurial ecosystem through Startup Hutch and other organizations. The fourth is having modern sites and infrastructure. And the fifth is to have a vibrant quality of life. So again, this is a county-wide economic development strategy with a focus on alignment. County-wide means that there are multiple organizations involved with bringing this to fruition, right? No one organization in Reno County can take all of this on at once. The purpose of the strategy is to show how the different initiatives within these goals work together. And so some of the initiatives you see in the strategy are things that are already taking place in the community, but we're raising them up into the strategy to say, hey, this is really, really important to achieving this long-range vision. Some of the initiatives you'll see in the strategy also are brand-new action items, things that I've seen and my team has seen in other places that work really well and have helped other communities get to these goals. So as we step into this a little bit further, there's a lot on each one of these slides. And again, you've got this report in front of you that you can read for yourself. But I do want to highlight a few of the actions within each one of these. So for each goal, we have three to five priorities. And for so, for high-wage jobs and quality investment, we see three priorities. The first one's expanding and retaining what we have. The second one is attracting new investment in those target clusters into our community. And then the third is embracing that cluster-focused approach. And you can see a list of sample actions. One is to make sure that we're making the case for higher wages among the employers that we have, letting them know how important it is that they raise wages and providing them with ideas for how they could offset the cost of raising wages through other means within their business. Amplifying our BRNE efforts, business retention and expansion efforts, modernizing the toolkit that Greater Hutch has to help local businesses and make sure they're tracking their needs. Launching a buy-local campaign across the county to make sure that people understand how critical it is that they purchase goods and services from the companies that we have here in the community, right? I think that in terms of Greater Hutch and this fundraising campaign that my colleague Doug and his team are going to start, we're going to be asking for additional resources for Greater Hutch and our economic development initiatives and Startup Hutch. We've got our resources. We have to confidently invest in economic development and business retention here and business creation. And also, the last one I'm going to touch on here, because there's more to go through, but really leveraging the Evergy Power Plant investment to attract business. That is a phenomenal investment. And I think I've told y'all before, but I travel around the country and work with other clients. I was just at the International Economic Development Council Conference. I've been at the National Chamber of Commerce event. I'm talking to other communities on a daily basis. And access to power is probably the top topic concern in economic development today. So few places have it, and what they do have is being kind of gobbled up. So the fact that you have this coming online, I would be, I wouldn't be surprised if you start to see some very, very serious interest in this community, which means that we need to be prepared for that and know what we want from those, from that interest to be sure that we're, you know, really achieving the vision that we have in mind for the community. Robust talent pipeline. Again, there's a lot of great initiatives already taking place, ones that could be probably better resourced, and a lot of initiatives that could use even more employer involvement. First and foremost, thinking back to that cluster approach, making sure that our K-12 programming and the programming at Hutch Community College is in alignment with those target clusters and the skills needs that they have. And also getting back behind Hutch Community College and making sure that we, as a community, are advocating for them as much as we can as decisions are being made at the state level around funding and new programming opportunities. We need to voice support for Hutch CC. I know y'all already do that, but I just wanted to emphasize this in the strategy. It's just such a tremendous asset and such a well-regarded institution. That's really a cornerstone of workforce development and talent here for Reno County. You'll see a few other recommendations. We point out in the strategy the ALIS population. Those are what you would consider to be the working poor, people who are working, but they're really having a hard time making ends meet. And they're like one childcare crisis away from not being able to come to work. This community has a higher level of people living at or below that ALIS threshold than any of the benchmarks that we looked at. It's about 42% of the population are either living in poverty or in the ALIS threshold. So really honing in on what we can do to support that population can be helpful, can elevate them and get them into the workforce. And you'll see some recommendations around that. As well as finally, keeping our foot on the gas pedal in terms of talent attraction, just like companies, we're trying to attract new investment in here. We need to work on attracting talent. And programs like Choose Hutch, I think that's recently off the ground here, you know, continue efforts like that to tell our story to families who might want to move here and work for the companies that we have. The third goal is around entrepreneurialism and building that entrepreneurial ecosystem. It's framed around the strategy that Startup Hutch recently created. We didn't want to start from scratch, so we took the strategy that they have. We highlighted what elements of that strategy really align with this overall economic development plan. And first and foremost, it's just promoting the importance of entrepreneurship as an economic development driver. When we think about economic development, I like to think of it as a three-legged stool. We've got our attraction efforts, we've got our expanding existing companies' efforts, but we also have starting up homegrown companies. And this community has a long legacy of success in entrepreneurship. There's a lot of roots here for companies that have started up and done really well, and some of them have even been acquired. So continuing that legacy and reminding people in the community that this is as important as a business attraction effort, to keep that stool from wobbling, I guess, if you think about the three-legged, just to continue that analogy. Modern sites and infrastructure. I mentioned this earlier with the first goal, but we have to continue to invest in infrastructure and in sites here. We have to keep, again, our foot on the gas pedal when it comes to making sure that we've got sites, we've got options on sites, we've got infrastructure needed to support our growth. Again, there's a lot of seeds that are being planted right now, but with that Evergy plant, it's possible that you'll start seeing some really big interest in this community with bigger facilities that are going to need those sites. So just because we have sites, it's not like, oh, we finished our sites. We've got one or two sites available for industry. Let's just, you know, kind of close the door and go home. No, I mean, this is a continual effort to make sure that we've got the product we need to support growth. And then finally, I know this is like drinking out of a fire hydrant. There's so much information, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have or even have conversations after this meeting. But the fifth goal is vibrant quality of life. And I think about quality of life as kind of the bow around the entire package, right? It's absolutely connected to economic development, and it's absolutely connected to being able to have a talent pipeline. So we've got to create the kind of community where people want to be, where the companies that hire those people want to be. So the strategy has a number of recommendations around everything from how to enhance the already really strong housing programs that you all have put in place, just need a little more fuel in the tank, to making sure that we're expanding programs like Kids Collective to address childcare needs, to making sure that we're continuing to even maybe accelerate programs around blight removal and downtown improvements, and also some beautification programs. So making our community as beautiful as it can be and making sure also that the people who live here have access to really quality housing, to childcare, and to healthcare. Okay. I'm going to take a breath. And share a few recommendations about implementing, because as you're looking at all of this, you're probably thinking, oh, my gosh, Amy, that's a lot. There's a lot in this plan, right? And again, it's a coordinating plan, so it's not just one organization who's doing this. It's many organizations, and they can all be aligned in implementation. The first recommendation in terms of how you implement this is to establish an implementation team. And we're recommending that you take the advisory group that was assembled to develop this plan, expand it if needed to include other organizations that have some kind of role or responsibility in implementation, and continue meeting as a group, maybe on a monthly basis and then later on, on a quarterly basis. But use that group to help reinforce accountability around implementation and make sure that we're sharing information about what our own organizations are doing to help implement this plan. In fact, any organization that has a role to play in implementation, I would say, take this plan every year when you're creating your own operational plans and make sure that what's prioritized in here is also included in your own plans. And again, reinforcing that alignment across the county. I even provide recommendations on the roles and responsibilities of organizations in a typical economic development ecosystem. So you could look at this list and say, okay, we've got this opportunity to do XYZ. What bucket does that fit into? And what organization would naturally be responsible for it? Community issue, community image came up quite a bit in our conversations and in the survey. And people are looking for, I guess, you know, blight came up and topics like that. But also, I think that there is a lot of conversation about how we could be an even more positive community in celebrating our many strengths. So we're recommending as part of implementation that you all invest in a community image campaign that's branded around the strategy, which is called Elevate Reno County. And there's all sorts of things that could be included in this community image campaign. First of all, it's just a communications campaign to let people know of all the good things that are happening here, and also let people know that it's important that they're cheerleaders for the community, that what they say to their neighbors, what they say to the person sitting next to them on the airplane on their flight to a business trip, that really matters. It makes an impression on other people, and we need to speak more positively about ourselves. But that image campaign could also include a whole host of other initiatives around beautification programs, buy-local, and entrepreneurship storytelling campaign. And you can see some other ideas listed here. So consider that. I think it's kind of fun, an Elevate Community Image Campaign. Finally, the strategy, you're like, how are we going to pay for this? Okay, so we know how we're going to implement it. We know what's in the strategy. How do we pay for it? The strategy offers some recommendations for creative ways of funding these initiatives. Of course, it's not going to be a one-off approach. There's going to be a number of different funding tools. Some of them are already in place, and some of them are tools that you could consider creating in the future. For example, a strategic investment fund or a, some tax increment financing areas of town that would help generate funds for specific territories in the county. And finally, final, final thing is that we also have to measure and report our progress. So the strategy recommends six or seven economic indicators that we would recommend you track on an annual basis and even benchmark against those same 10 counties that we looked at in the report or include others. But those indicators are listed here, and they should provide you with a good barometer of how we're doing. Are we going up? Or do we need to take a pause and maybe adjust our strategy to make sure that these numbers are all improving year after year over the next five years? The strategy also, this is just a sample, but we've provided the back of the strategy some implementation tables. So for each action, it lists the action, the organizations that would be involved in a leadership role, and then estimated start timing. I'm still working with Greater Hutch and the advisory group on fine-tuning these tables to make sure that they're as up-to-date as possible today. But these tables, over time, could be adjusted. They're just one way to keep the strategy updated and alive, is just use these tables and, you know, add different leaders or change the dates as the strategy progresses. All right, so that is a lot of information, and I thank you for your time. I promised I would do this in 20 minutes, I think, maybe in 21 or 22 minutes, but thank you. And I guess I'm available for questions if you have any.
Well, our agenda said 30 to 45 minutes, so you beat it.
Oh, well, I aimed a please. Any questions?
Has anybody? Thank you. Has anybody got any further questions or thoughts? Or we need a little time to digest and then get back with them later? What's the feeling here?
Well, I'm looking forward to working with this plan, hopefully, and the entities that are listed there to be a cheerleader for the county. And some of the, some of the ideas that you have, I think will go a long way to hopefully improving Reno County. So I appreciate your work on that and everybody on the team for this. I'm looking forward to going through it a little bit more in-depth and just seeing where I maybe can plug in to help some. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, you touched on something, I guess I will say. You touched about bringing the image of Hutch and Reno County up, you know, in the communities that are in here. And it's easy when you live somewhere to get down on all the negatives that you see and not bring it up. I did something here probably a couple of months ago. We have new neighbors that moved in with us, and I found it very, very enlightening for me. I'm just going to quickly hopefully tell this story. But they moved here. She's a current recruiter for the Army here in Hutch, and I probably shouldn't reveal, but anyway. She was a few months training before she got here. And so him and his daughter, we were able to take them around one Saturday. We took them out to other communities and through Hutch and showed them some highlights and stuff like that. To see that through someone else's eyes that came out of a very big community, a couple of them in the moves that they had made, and just a wonder to look in their eyes. And the little things that you drive by, you take for granted. It was a great refresher for me, because it's easy to, it's easy to not have a positive outlook when you talk to people. And so that strikes a nerve with me, because I've been that before, where you don't always build it up. And I would hope people had served in this kind of capacity. Obviously, I'd be building their community and their county up. But sometimes we have negative things we say. But I didn't hear anything from, what I found was interesting. I didn't hear a lot of negative from this fellow. He was so excited about things. He said, you can't believe. Well, I'll just say they came out of Tampa, and that's a big area. And he said, they don't have nothing like Hutchinson has and the personal connections and the things that they have. And in fact, I had a conversation inside a chamber about this couple. I'd still like to see them promoted somehow if they're open to it, because that's the eyes that people need to see from the outside of what we have here. And sometimes we just don't realize what we're setting on.
That's right.
And so it was, it was a great experience for me. I needed that. It was kind of like I needed slapped around a little bit and woke up. And so that's kind of what it did for me. So appreciate you here.
I love that story.
Putting up with me there. But so, yeah, you kind of touched on a nerve. It's easy for every one of us that live here to get down on all the negative things we see instead of building up the positive things. So I'll do a better job at that.
Well, it's directly correlated to economic development success. That's been my experience. You know, I was kind of born and raised professionally in Austin, Texas. I used to say, that's a community that drinks its Kool-Aid, right? It's always bragging about itself. And we were intentionally trained to do that. You know, the chamber reached out to the whole community and told people what they could do to promote Austin. And, you know, it's had this, this long-range effect. So it's, it is really important to economic growth.
Any other comments, thoughts?
You mentioned the importance of the local government. Have you had experience with things like, in Hutchinson, we've got different communities. You've got certain areas that are a certain community. I call them individual communities within the whole community. Just like the southwest portion, southeast portion, and Lincoln area, Lincoln School area. Have you seen the importance of, or the, any results coming from those specific areas of a community that kind of bond together and create then, through some leadership in that area, positive results, in other words, starting right down with the homeowner and the people that live there to create more of a positive in that area, and then that will expand? Have you seen any results of where they've done more or less? I call them almost an enlarged block party.
Right.
Have you seen any of that happening around? And, and any ideas on how to make something like that happen if it, if it works?
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a firm believer that economic growth and economic good starts at the granular, very local level and comes upward. So in this community, for example, I've seen really good things. I've gotten a chance to work with leaders in Bueller and Haven, for example.
Our smaller communities have that.
Right. And so I think some of the lessons learned, I was thinking about the community image campaign, and, and that idea started with the Love Where You Live initiative from the Community Foundation. But I think it's Bueller who took that and created a, a smaller kind of community pride initiative around that Love Where You Live. And that example could be taken to other communities, could be taken up to the county level. So that's just one example of many. I mean, there's also good public policies that are taking place at the local level that could become, you know, more of a, a county-wide toolkit over time. Does that answer your question?
Pretty, pretty much.
Validating.
The method to get there, I guess, that's what needs to happen, or, or how to, how to make it happen, I guess.
Yeah, how do you showcase the good things that are happening at the local town and city level and use it as inspiration for other communities across the county?
You know, there's two or three or four communities that, that kind of have that now, rural areas. But I've just.
If I could jump in on that topic for just a moment.
Of course, yeah. I think that is a perfect example of how other organizations can find themselves in this work. I'm really pleased that Elevate Reno County kind of came out of the culmination of the work so that we can have a unifying way to encourage everyone to help elevate Reno County. And it goes right down to the neighborhood level that you mentioned, Ron. You know, we work really closely with Hutch Rec. And Hutch Rec, the Community Foundation, Greater Hutch, and the city for many years leaned in together on the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative. And that's the exact initiative that I think helped give identity to some of the neighborhoods you were referencing, like Southwest Bricktown. They, they came together to create neighborhood input sessions where the neighbors could get together and talk about, how do we improve our own neighborhood? So I think you could build upon that. They started a donuts on the driveway, they looked at beautification efforts. A lot of it came down to something as simple as putting up signage that helped identify the neighborhood in a positive way. I think maybe Brush Up Hutch and some of the other housing improvement initiatives came out of those discussions. Those are perfect examples of how everyone can lean in to economic development together. Everyone thinks of economic development as, who are you going after this week? Or who are you going to help grow their job base this week? But economic development is a team sport like no other, and it takes every single entity thinking. And so we, we plan to take this show on the road across Reno County, talking to city councils, talking to nonprofit organizations, talking to partners about how they all help elevate Reno County together. So I'm really proud of the work that, it's, we're just getting started. I mean, drafting this plan is, is just a, a starting point for how we lift this off. And I don't want to steal any more of Amy's thunder, but I also would just like to introduce and maybe bring up to the podium for just one minute, Doug Kinsinger with Opportunity Funding, because as Amy identified, as one of the important implementation pieces of this, securing funding to execute it is going to take another team effort. And so Doug is part of our team. He's not a stranger to us. He worked here in 2016 with Greater Hutch when we launched what was then Hutch Rising. He worked with us as an advisor during Reno Rising, and he's going to work with us now to elevate Reno County, and specifically to help fundraise for Greater Hutch and Startup Hutch. But I think there are things broadly in this plan that are going to take more resources. Doug has folks on his team. Doug came out of a professional role in Topeka for many years. He was with the Topeka Chamber and Go Topeka. Part of his team helped really launch Topeka on a path to properly resourcing their economic development strategies. And it is no secret that one piece of this, there's tax funding required for many of the things to make these things truly be successful. And he has seen that done in other communities. So he's going to advise us on the securing the funding piece over the next year. But we're excited that we are all on this team, and you guys are on the team to help elevate Reno County together. So I'll, I'll just ask Doug to come up and introduce himself.
I'll keep my comments brief. I've been to many commission meetings, and I know that there is merit to that. I'm excited about working with you. Hutchinson is one of my favorite communities. I've been here many, many times. I've worked with Amy actually in a professional capacity when I was the executive at the Greater Topeka Chamber and Go Topeka, and she does excellent work. So I've been kind of shadowing Amy in this process, and she's done an excellent job as always, so I'm excited about that. The key about this process, as Amy mentioned, economic development is not a one-person or a one-organization effort. It's going to need your help and assistance. It's going to need, obviously, the leadership of the Hutchinson Chamber and Greater Startup Hutch and many, many others, the Community Foundation, the county, and many, many, many others. But we're going to need funding to be successful. You've got some good things going, but to take advantage of that, we're going to need support and help and everyone working together. So our job is to get those resources in place. And more importantly, more than just the resources, everybody kind of pulling in the same direction to make the elements of this plan shift into the right place so that everybody helps accomplish this plan. So I'm excited about working with you to help this plan come to fruition. Look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Did I see another question?
I wa, I've been involved with some area startups before. I want to know how you continue to keep the gas tank at least half-full and not empty.
We have to uncover every rock. And I want to give you one more example today of how you all have been a part of making sure we keep our foot on the pedal but are properly resourced. About a year ago, we made an ask of this organization to support the Make My Move effort for our community to become, to get us out there on the national stage for how we are attracting people to Reno County. And you invested in that program. We were one of the early communities in Kansas to really lean in to Make My Move. We stood up a site that is helping people across the country and world understand how special Hutchinson, Reno County, and all of our communities are. As a result of working with Make My Move, they began working at the state level to also leverage state funding for a program called Home in the Heartland. And through the Kansas Treasurer's Office, it was just announced last week, there are 12 communities in Kansas that are going to be sharing in $1.5 million to extend the runway for Make My Move. And Hutchinson and Reno County Chamber was the lead applicant on that application. We actually are receiving the largest portion of those funds, about $225,000, that's going to help extend the runway. So your $90,000 investment helped us bring another $225,000 to fruition to lean into that program. And that's just one piece of that talent pipeline work. But every single element of this plan needs to be properly resourced in that same way. So we're not letting up. Thank you, thank you. We're going to keep going. You know, Dawn Britton stood up here and talked about the process that we're going through to get a new road built to serve the K-96 Kimball Industrial Park corridor, as well as that Evergy corridor that is going to be a catalyst to help us really, truly show that that site is shovel-ready for the future. We couldn't be doing that work without other grant funding from other sources, and that's how we applied for the base grant funds. And we couldn't build a road ourselves. And so we're leaning into the experts, then you all are the experts at that work. And so I appreciate how Dawn is really working full force to get that underway so that we can expend those funds in the right way, in a very strategic way, to help us bring that site to be shovel-ready. And modern sites and infrastructure is right here in this plan. So this is not a plan to sit on the shelf. This is a plan to have in front of us every day that we're reminding ourselves of our part of this work. And again, we couldn't do it without partners, and we appreciate your support of it. So there are more work to come. We have had Randy sitting on the advisory group. I know he, I hope he intends to be on the implementation team. That implementation team is going to be instrumental to keeping this top of mind and the cadence of those being on a regular basis. This is not just a 2025 work. This is a every day, every month through the, through 2030 and beyond.
Can you tell us what you've seen through Make My, just back up a little bit if you don't mind? Make My, I've had some information, but I'd like you to say publicly what you've seen throughout the year or whatever on Make My Move and how it's working.
So the first few months of this year was building, building out the messaging and the infrastructure on the backend of their site on our behalf. And since then, now we have been pitched to hundreds of people that have, have crossed Hutchinson or Reno County's doorstep virtually through the Make My Move platform. As those folks decide on their choices of places to live, some of them put us on a short list of places that they are interested in. They're also being vetted by Make My Move to make sure that they're meeting the income qualifiers and all of the background checks to be able to, for us to work with them. And then my team then goes to work on the backend, Katie, Lauren, Seth, in looking at those applicants and then talking, courting them, talk, answering questions that they have about the communities here. A lot of times, those questions revolve around housing, and, um, you know, that we have work to do in housing. So, and they have work to do in housing on their own end. One of the movers simply needed to be able to make sure she could sell her home in another state to be able to prepare to move. Another mover needed to make sure that they had a job under contract that enabled them to move. We actually have the first mover. He started his job with Hutch Community College, I believe, October 6th this week. I'm not going to say his name for the, for privacy reasons, but, um, anyway. So professionals that are finding us and then finding jobs and moving here because of that Make My Move platform. And I believe we have more in the wings behind him that are just waiting through their application process. So it is working. I can't tell you the specific numbers. I'd be remiss if I tried, but Lauren might be able to.
I've got it.
All right, all right, Katie, please step in.
Katie Fallon, Economic Development Project Manager. Our first official mover is here. He started this week. The, um, we have two more that are currently renovating their homes to sell. And so they've gone through all the approval processes, and Make My Move has put them in hold status. So as soon as those houses sell, they have a six-month timeline from the time they sign the offer letter to get here. And with the way their houses were almost renovated, we have them in hold, fully approved. So as soon as they start listing their house, they start that six-month timeline. They couldn't just meet that right away. And so Make My Move has worked with us to allow them to be in hold so that when their houses are ready, they can sell on their markets. One is in Seattle, I believe the other one is in California. And so that just gives them the time. They're both remote workers. And then our first official mover is actually part of the in-person program. So those, that's where we're at right now. We have seven more that have been offered, and I think two have accepted this week. So we're now starting the process with the two of them as well. So we're a third of the way there in terms of people that are going to be here. And then we've got a few more on the pipelines. We should hit 10 by August, no problem. And then our additional piece with the grant money.
Lauren Storm, Business Retention, Expansion, and Workforce Program Manager. Just a little bit about the implementation of the grant funds. That $225,000 is going to be applied to an additional cash incentive that will be added to our incentive, our existing incentive package that's valued at $10,500. With some of the, um, if, pending qualification for the housing programs, such as the Reno County Residential Homeowner Incentive Packet Grant that will supply $5,000 to first-time homebuyers in a new development in Reno County, that we have two applicants for already. And then also the Interfaith Housing's $2,000 Down Payment Assistance Program in specific neighborhoods in Reno County. So those have some stipulations around them. Hopefully, we're able to help coordinate housing through those programs. But this additional cash incentive will help for them to be able to apply and incentivize them to choose Hutch and Reno County over our competitors. It's also going to be implemented as far as marketing materials through Make My Move to really put our community on the forefront, to give them extra resources to be able to upgrade our site and to keep it in public mind and outreach to more to get 10 and beyond applicants and new movers to Reno County.
Thank you, Lauren. The other thing that Amy mentioned, we had already been, before we launched the strategic plan, working on a platform called Choose Hutch. We already owned the website domain for Choose Hutch. And so we started thinking about, how could we specifically move messaging for how one would want to choose living here to a platform that had just those facts? Not all the rigmarole behind the scenes of economic development incentives for business, but for actual movers. And so choosehutch.com is now live as a platform with information about choosing Hutchinson as a place to live. Our next goal, now that we have the new branding and revealing of the strategic plan, is to also go out there and elevate Reno County in a similar way, with a similar platform. So we're, we're looking at all ways to explore how we help people who are out there in the world looking for a new place to live, a place that is welcoming, a place that has great quality of life, a place that has tourism amenities like no other. There's really no other special place like Reno County, in my opinion. And I think we have to also help people who live here appreciate what is right under their nose and also help them see that this is a really special place. So again, I would just close with saying, we all have a role and responsibility to elevate Reno County, and let's get to work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.